I'd like to call this meeting to order. Is this working? Yeah, you can hear me. Oh, okay. First of all, I'd certainly like to welcome our guests from Southern Lee High School. What a nice-looking group of teenagers. Welcome to our meeting. You will notice that Mrs. Carlisle is not at her place. She is recovering from some surgery. And she asked me to share this with the board. The past month has been a most difficult time for me and my family as we grieve the loss of my stepson, Patrick Carlisle, who lost his battle with cancer. As well as during my recuperation after surgery, the overwhelming support through all of the acts of kindness are truly appreciated. We are very blessed to have so many caring people in our lives. Continued thoughts and prayers as we continue to heal will be greatly appreciated. Thank you so very much. And on that note, please join me in a moment of prayerful meditation as we keep Wendy in our thoughts. And now if you will please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
We do have someone who signed up for public comments. Mrs. Rita Marble, will you please come to the rostrum? We ask that our comments are restricted to three minutes and the board be reminded that we do not respond.
Okay. I guess I ought to use this so everybody can hear me. I'm here for Southern Lee, J-R-O-T-C. We are hosting a try meet this weekend. It's the largest in the state. We have thirty-one schools attending. Over twenty-five-hundred people will be there. As well as we've had people go to Nationals with our rifle team and placed second in the nation in the shooting competition. We would like to ask that if the board can find it in their hearts to help fund us a little bit better, we would greatly appreciate it. This program's outstanding. We've had students get over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar scholarships to go to college. That's what they push. They do not push going into the military, but they try to give them structure and what they can do with their lives and what is ahead past high school and to help them gain better understandings. And we would appreciate your support greatly because this is a wonderful program with great instructors. Thank you.
Thank you for being here and thank the students, thank you for being here too. And as is our custom, I'd like to share the vision of this Lee County Board of Education. Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experience for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society. And as our custom, I'd like to read from Policy Code 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. School Board Members must avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board. We must avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board. We must avoid the misuse of public funds. We must avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts. And we must avoid making confidential information public. And I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The agenda is approved. And now I'd like, and I would like to entertain a motion for approval of minutes of nine-four two thousand fourteen, nine-nine two thousand fourteen, and nine-twenty-nine two thousand fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for nine-four two thousand fourteen, nine-nine two thousand fourteen, and nine-twenty-nine two thousand fourteen.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign again. The motion carries. And we can now proceed with our school presentation from Southern Lee High School students.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Eli Brightbill from Southern Lee High School. Seated here in the front row with me is Cadet Major Gaddy Williams, Cadet Captain Tiffany Raybine, Cadet Major Norman Guerrero, Cadet Captain Cassidy Hickman, and Cadet Captain Robert Marble. To my right is our instructors, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel McIntyre and Sergeant Major Thaggard. My bad, sir. Also here with us are Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Jones and Cadet Major Gaddy from Lee County High School. Next. Does this not show up for you guys can see it?
There he comes.
Okay.
We're a little slow.
All right, this is the purpose of our brief. All right, and this is the agenda I will follow. Okay, this slide depicts the overall total enrollment for J-R-T-C at Southern Lee High School for the past five years, and we anticipate growth in the years to come. Currently, we have one-hundred-and-ninety-two cadets enrolled this semester and one-hundred-and-fifty-six for next semester. This slide depicts our annual try meet that will be hosted on Saturday, eighteen October two thousand fourteen. We expect to have thirty J-R-T-C programs participate in the event. And based on the supported and supporting relationships, we are being supported by the North Carolina National Guard, senior R-T-C programs to include Campbell University, Methodist University, Fayetteville State University, and UNC Pembroke. Additionally, we will be receiving support from the Eighteenth Airborne Corps Sergeant Audie Murphy Club. And this club consists of what's considered to be the best non-commissioned officers on Fort Bragg. And this event draws approximately eleven-hundred J-R-T-C cadets from North Carolina, Virginia, and South Carolina. Next, we have our service learning project for this year. And this is somewhat of a new concept for us. We haven't been asked to do one before, so it was, we had to come up with this ourselves to a certain extent. What we decided to do as a staff and as battalion leadership, we wanted to sponsor a World War II Veterans Bus Trip to Washington, D.C. So World War II veterans, or possibly Vietnam as well, can see the war memorial for the war that they served in. And we understand that this is a huge undertaking for this staff, and we ask for any support you may be able to give us in finding points of contact and ways to raise money for this event. And we are planning on partnering with Lee County High School's J-R-T-C, the American Legion, VFW, and other clubs throughout the Sanford community. All right. And subject to any questions you have, this concludes my brief.
Do we have any questions or concerns for the cadets?
I just think it's a great idea about the World War II veterans and helping them, you know, be able to see the memorial. It's a wonderful memorial up there. It's really a nice one.
Well, and we did the math, and we can take a bus from Sanford to D.C. and back in a day. It's a long day.
Right.
But we can take, one bus will cost approximately five-thousand dollars. We did the math for that. So we'd like to take one, and if we can raise ten thousand, of course, we'd like to take two as well. But for, I felt like that was somewhat reasonable to raise five-thousand dollars to do that. I think we have a pretty good plan to raise three-thousand dollars. We were, did the math, and we're trying to host a talent show at Southern Lee High School that I think could possibly raise three-thousand dollars if we do it right.
Right. Well, good luck with that. I hope you're able to raise all the funds and be able to do that. I think it's a great idea.
All right, thank you.
Any further comments? Certainly, the future of our country looks safe in your hands looking at the students present here. Thank you for being here.
Thanks for having us.
And why don't we take just a two- or three-minute recess while the students are excused? I know you have homework tomorrow.
Dr. Smith, I think it's outstanding that R-T-C programs at Lee County High School and Southern both working together on that. And I think that says a lot about your commitment to it and the teamwork and sort of collaboration that you build with each other. And I think that sends an important message, and we appreciate that.
Agreed.
Now, of course, you don't have to leave. You can stay and enjoy all of this if you'd like.
I think I heard someone earlier say they were hungry.
That was me.
The first item on the chairman's report concerns the annual meeting of the North Carolina School Board Association, which is going to meet from the seventeenth and eighteenth and nineteenth of November. And we are allowed four voting members for the general meeting. I guess we need a show of hands of members who are going to go to that meeting.
I can go, but I didn't know whether or not I could. I can go.
Sure you can go. Okay, Dr. Smith is going, Mr. Akonosha is going, Ms. Brogan's going. That's four.
I'll be unable to get it.
Cameron? No. In that case, is there a motion that these four be elected as our official representative to vote at the general meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth? I need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that the four individuals mentioned be our voting delegates.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The other thing on the chairman's report, I would like to proceed with it. I feel obligated to give a fairly brief report on the North Carolina School Board Association District Forum Meeting that was held at Pinecrest High School on September the eleventh. Dr. Bryan, Mrs. Brogan, Mrs. Britt, and I attended. Dr. Ed Dunlap, the Executive Director of the North Carolina School Board Association, and Leanne Winter, who is Director of Governmental Relations, presented opening remarks relative to the last two legislative sessions and how those actions will affect public education. They were both pretty pessimistic about the future of public education. Dr. Dunlap in particular characterized the past two legislative sessions as an assault on public education. The major areas of concern that he quoted were budget cuts to education, teacher pay, teacher assistance cuts, teacher tenure, charter schools, vouchers, virtual schools, list as long. And his observation was that the most important or concerning effect of this is the loss of support for public education, is the migration of teachers from our district, from the state, and most sadly is from the profession. And that's certainly going to make it increasingly difficult for us to employ qualified teachers in the future. And perhaps an even more long-term problem associated with this lack of support for public education, according to Dr. Dunlap, is a reduction in students who are choosing education as a college major. Statewide, the number of students enrolling in education at the state's public colleges and universities is down some twenty percent. Worse yet, the number of education students who are enrolling at NC State University is down by fifty-two percent. And that is particularly worrisome since the majority of math and science teachers graduate from NC State. And I might add, on a personal note, that certainly the elimination of Teaching Fellows Program two years ago has certainly influenced the students currently enrolled in education programs. Now, please understand, you know, everybody's excited and very appreciative of the raises that were provided by the recent legislature. However, according to Dr. Dunlap, until North Carolina teacher pay is at least consistent with national averages, we're going to find it very difficult to recruit quality teachers in our public education. And I had, I had planned to bore you with the bills in the legislature that presented all of these changes, and Mrs. Britt and I had a miscommunication, so I won't do that. But let's do get that list of bills so that everybody will see exactly what prompted his comments in terms of action of the legislature. So I will get you the information in the next week or so. And now we can proceed with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. With great pleasure tonight, I'd like to ask Judy McDonald and Jody Stalfour to come forward, please. Each year, the North Carolina Art Education Association presents awards for outstanding educators in the state of North Carolina. And as was pointed out, I think, in the newspaper a week or so ago, we are very fortunate in Lee County to not just have one award winner, but two award winners. The Elementary, NCAEA Elementary Art Educator of the Year, Judy McDonald, Greenwood Elementary School, and the NCAEA Secondary Art Educator of the Year, Jody Stalfour from Lee County High School. I'm not sure how often this has happened in the state of North Carolina, that an award's been given to more than one educator in the district before, but this is outstanding award. It says a lot about what art teachers do in Lee County. Because I know Jody and Judy would be the first to say that there are lots of different art teachers out in our district who could have won this award. And we appreciate all that you do because I know how much you, how much effort you put into not only your classes and classrooms in your buildings, but how much you do to promote and cultivate art within Lee County. Lee County has a very rich tradition of art that has served this community well. You all are the epitome of what that is, I believe. And just kudos to you for your effort and your work and everything you do for art in Lee County. Congratulations.
If I may, Dr. Bryan's leaving one more award winner off the list. Dr. Bryan was also, is also going to be recognized at our state conference as being a supporter and friend of the arts. And he is one of, I believe, of six people throughout our state that will be receiving that award this year. So he too, I know that he doesn't like to ring his own bell, but I am not doing it for him, but he will also be represented at our conference in winning one of these prestigious awards. So we're very proud to have this superintendent that is very supportive of the arts as well.
Jody, you weren't supposed to do that.
He didn't, I was.
Also, a great honor tonight for me to recognize our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year in Lee County. We were able to do this on Friday, and the best part about recognizing our Principal and Assistant Principal of the Year is we sort of like to just show up and make the award. And it's always nice to sort of see the surprise and sort of emotion that goes with it, not only from our recipients, but also from our teachers within the building, because they're always very proud when they have an administrator who's named as Principal or Assistant Principal of the Year. This year's Assistant Principal of the Year, I'd like to ask Andrea Sloan to come forward from Tramway Elementary School. And Principal of the Year, Sylvia Huffer from Warren Williams Elementary School. Let me just say one more thing, and we'll turn it over to them if they want to make some comments. I think what makes this award so special is that they're nominated and elected by their peers within the district. So I think it says a lot when your peers in your profession say, hey, you're doing a really great job. And just congratulations, we know how hard you work and the effort you put into your school every day, not just in your school, but across the school district. And just want to thank you, and love to hear some comments if you'd like to make them to the board.
Well, I started my career here as a student. I was the first class in kindergarten to go all the way through J.R. Ingram, the year that it was built. And so it's been a privilege to be able to come back and start an educational career as a teacher here at Warren Williams. Sylvia was actually one of my colleagues in my first few years as a teacher. And then I moved over to Tramway in an administrative internship, which I never thought would turn into an assistant principalship there under Ms. Spiel. And I want to thank her for her servant leadership and just teaching me how to, allowing me to co-lead with her, because she truly has trusted me to be a part of Tramway as a leader there.
Well, I would like to thank you. This is quite an honor. I'm very thankful to all the principals because I could not be here if it wasn't for their support and their leadership and completely the support that we get from central office for the school, from the school board, and from our teachers. That makes our job a little easier. And so, thank you. It is quite an honor, and I'll do my best working on that portfolio.
Start tonight. Start tonight. Congratulations again, we're really proud of you. Thanks for everything you do. Dr. Smith, at this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Jim Atkinson for the Clean School of the Month for Cipian.
To you guys, I don't know if I need to hold this or not, but good evening to you. Again, it's an honor and a pleasure to be up here to recognize one of our schools as being the Clean School of the Month Award. This is the first one for two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And our whole district, we are honored that we had all of our schools to score above ninety. And it's just, that's the first time it's happened. And we're just so proud of our custodial staff. So without further ado, I'd like to bring up Ms. Bridges and her staff and recognize them Sand Lee Middle School as our Clean School of the Month Award winner. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I am disappointed to say none of our custodians could be here. We had them all revved up and excited about being here, and slowly, things have happened because we found out about a couple weeks ago, and slowly, things have happened and they have not been able to be here. And I will say that all of our custodians drive buses and get up very early in the morning. But I'm going to turn this over because it's not under my leadership that they have done this. It is Keisha Dur took over this year as being in charge of the custodians, and I want her to say something on their behalf. But I also want to tell you how proud I am because to get the first one, it means that they worked super hard because everybody has nobody in the building over the summer. And for my team to actually have pulled out the high score this month means a lot.
Again, to reiterate what Ms. Bridges said, we are extremely proud of our custodial staff for earning the first Clean School Recognition of the Month. Our custodians and our students and our staff take so much pride in their building, and we are so fortunate to have a custodial staff that supports us in our effort to create a clean and safe environment for our students. So we thank you for that recognition.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Dr. Smith, that concludes my report.
Before we start with committee reports, I would like to recognize two young men who are here from the Boy Scouts. Would you stand up, please? They're here working on their Citizen Merit Badge, and I'm just really pleased you picked us to come and observe. Thank you for being in Scouts, and thanks for being here tonight. And now we can proceed with committee reports. Dr. Linda Smith, Curriculum Instruction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The CNI Committee has been very busy since our last board meeting. We've had three CNI meetings. On September the tenth, we had our Sand Lee Middle, we met at Sand Lee Middle for our middle school. And then on September the seventeenth at Broadway Elementary, and on October the first, we were at Southern Lee. But I would like to just highlight a few things that have taken place, that have been mentioned, and we're just really proud of what's going on here in Lee County. The success of the NAF academies at Lee County High School and also at Southern Lee. And the one good thing about our NAF academies, you know, would be that the, there will be internships tied to the academies. Also, the increasing number of students taking dual enrollment courses at CCC, and that is our Central Carolina Works. If you've pulled up the Inspired, the Digital Digest Inspired Magazine, you notice now we have videos. And so if you have not done so, to take a look at that. We found out about the, well, we're continuing our success with the Avid programs at the middle school and also the Palatin of the Avid at Broadway. You will see tonight on your consent agenda the upgraded football helmets. And also, you will see in, on the, under the consensus agenda that Patricia Calderon reported on the Beginning Teacher Professional Growth Plan Focus Sessions and the Beginning Teacher Support Program and Mentoring Plan. We're happy to learn that the waiver testing option was sent to the state and was approved by the State Board of Education. And having the waiver in place will provide greater flexibility for the time a test can be given. And the waiver will increase the testing window to a six-day window instead of five. And lastly, at all of our meetings, the principals talked about the opening of the school year, some of the programs going on, and the excitement of the students at the, at the schools. And so, everything that we've learned so far, we're headed towards improved student achievement this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Facilities and Technology, Mr. Benardi.
Mr. Chairman, at our September meeting, Facilities and Technology, we discussed one matter that will be before you tonight and under the consent agenda, the application for lottery funds for the remaining HVAC project at Eastley Middle School. And we also had a presentation from Don Kavasits with the county, the Planning Department, as to the growth of the county, you know, which areas of the county is experiencing the most growth, less growth. And he gave a very interesting presentation, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that and share it with each of the board members if you hadn't already received it. Also, what we ask him to do is since, you know, we have already approved a site and a plan for an additional elementary school, we ask him to go ahead and begin the work in trying to redraw the district lines, the attendance lines for the elementary school, and bring that back at a subsequent meeting for our for, for our review and, and, and recommendation to the board. Um, and our, our next scheduled meeting will be October the twenty-eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Benardi. Uh, Fin- Finance, uh, Mr. Akonosha.
Last, uh, uh, meeting in September, we, uh, we talked about, uh, the budget reconciliation and some of the issues that Mr. Benardi talked about came through to us. And, uh, of course, last month, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Carla can't be there, and, uh, the chairman came and, uh, uh, filled in for Ms. Carla. So, we, uh, talked about the board expense and the, uh, capital outlay, and we also, uh, send, uh, talked about the board, uh, expense, uh, just for the, uh, board information.
Next meeting.
Next meeting will be in, um, October, I think, twenty... Can't remember, twenty-six? Do you remember?
Miss, Mrs. Brea, keep her straight.
Twenty-third.
Is that what?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay.
Uh, Policy, Mr. Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Policy Committee has not met since our last board meeting. And our next meeting is October twenty-first, um, a week from tomorrow. And, uh, we have one policy on for second reading tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to say that our next meeting will be, um, October the twenty-ninth, and will be at Wesley Middle School. And also, I know I always like consensus. That was under the consent agenda, not the consensus agenda, but anyway. But anyway, thank you.
Uh, with, with that admonition, uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, approve tonight's, uh, consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is, uh, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, like sign. The motion carries. The consent, consent, consent agenda has been approved. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, uh, we do have a policy second reading. Mr. Sharp, would you like to make a motion to approve that, uh, policy on second reading?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the second reading of Policy seventy-four sixty-one.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. The motion carries. The, uh, policy is approved. Under New Business, Mr. Akonosha, would you like to make this motion, uh, that we approve the, uh, reconciled budget?
Aye, uh, Mr. Chairman, I want to, uh, uh, make a motion that we approve the, uh, revised budget, uh, for the year twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen.
And is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stevens is in the back, uh, back, and I'm sure that he would be delighted to come forward and ask any questions, uh, that anybody may have concerning our reconciled budget. You're off the hook. It's been moved and seconded. Is any further discussion?
And this did, this did go through committee?
Yes.
It was just, just on new business?
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the reconciled budget book is, is approved. And Mr. Akonosha, if you would make a motion, uh, we can proceed with closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for purpose of discussing information that is privileged, confidential or not, a public record under NCGA Section one four-three, three-one-eight, dot one-one, A-one.
And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We can, uh, retire to closed session, please.
Yep, we're here.
We're back in open session. Um, the first item of business will be a motion to approve the Human Resources Report as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Human Resources, uh, presentation as, uh, as presented.
Ned, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign, against. Motion carries. And, uh, is there a motion for adjournment? And is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned.